We'll call this meeting to order. And let's all prepare for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Right.
Okay. High Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Scott, you're awesome.
Well played, Scott.
Yeah, I really like that background.
That's my go-to for all these meetings. That's my job.
I wanted to say something yesterday that was perfect, so.
You normally sit next to the flag, so it totally makes sense.
Yeah, it's just common with the territory.
Okay, Madam Clerk, if you could do the roll call.
Roll call, Chair Pietrowski.
Here.
Vice Chair Hammond.
Here.
Secretary Thompson.
Here.
Board Member Fobbs.
Here.
Board Member Huliza. Board Member Cantor. And Board Member Stansberry.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, would I make a motion to excuse Board Members Huliza and Cantor from today's meeting?
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call. To excuse Board Member Huliza and Board Member Cantor. Chair Pietrowski.
Aye.
Vice Chair Hammond.
Yes.
Secretary Thompson.
Yes.
Board Member Fobbs.
Aye.
And Board Member Stansberry.
Aye.
Motion carry.
Okay. So we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. There are no comments or objections. We will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as it is written.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda as written.
Second.
All those in favor?
Roll call. Board Member Fobbs.
Aye.
Board Member Hammond.
Yes.
Chair Pietrowski.
Aye.
Board Member Stansberry.
Aye.
And Board Member Thompson.
Yes.
Motion carry for approval of the agenda.
Okay, move on to the next item. Approval of the meeting minutes for the regular meeting of May 19th, 2020. We'll entertain any comments or corrections that might need to be made at this time. If there are none, we'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes as they are written.
I have one question. So, under new business, when we talked about the swimming pools, I remember there was a resident who would come to the meeting. And I don't see them named.
I think that she's referencing the public comments section. So even though the comments were made during kind of part of the new business section, but they were really, they're referencing the public comment section.
Okay, thank you.
I think I remember that's when she actually did speak. Didn't you invite her to speak at the end?
Yeah, I remember it being that way, too.
And I think the way things are written, it's addressed to items that aren't on the agenda. And if it's an item on the agenda.
There's that.
Yep. So if there are no other comments, we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
They're moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Roll call. Board Member Hammond.
Yes.
Chair Pietrowski.
Aye.
Board Member Stansberry.
Aye.
Board Member Thompson.
Yes.
And Board Member Fobbs.
Aye.
Motion carry for the minutes of May 19th, 2020.
Okay, so we'll move on to the public comments regarding any items that are not listed on the agenda. Do we have the?
We have no public.
No attendees, so I think we can close that and move on to the next item for which we have discussion. And that is the old business and tabled items comprehensive plan virtual open house results.
All right. I will actually. I was going to start my PowerPoint for the rest of the discussion, but the first slide is really a summary of the power of the public input. And I was going to have Megan give you that, review that with you tonight. So I will just let her do that and she can share her screen.
All righty. Let's do that here. Okay, so I'll just run through the first couple of questions that were on our virtual open house. And then Jill will kind of take away all the neighborhood feedback, as well as the redevelopment sites, which had some really interesting comments as well, too. But the first couple of questions we asked came through the virtual open house platform that ran through May 11th all the way through May 25th. And folks had the opportunity to submit feedback. And I'm sure all of you got the chance to as well, answer a couple of questions that we had posed to the city. And I believe all of you were able to get this PDF as well, too. So I'm just going to run through it. And if you want me to pause to look at something more, just holler and I'll do that. But altogether throughout this period, there was, the site was viewed 324 times. And there was an average of 28 responses per question, which is pretty good. And then there was a total of 156 participants throughout all of the questions. So that means some people may have answered one question and chose to skip another, or they may have filled out every question, but that's the total respondents across all the questions. And the first one we asked here was pretty basic, just on their thoughts on Lathrop Village. So a total of 17 folks participated and gave feedback in this. And this was the format of like a word cloud that you can see here, nice and colorful. Any word that is larger is one that showed up more prominently. So people most identified with the word community, friendly, beautiful, and a lot of very positive words in well, in here as well. So progressive, historic, charming, friendly neighbors, a lot of sense of neighborhood and community. So all the things that you want to hear people talking about their neighborhood about. Um, and then we moved on to transportation mobility, which was an important topic for the folks here. 21 people submitted feedback. And I believe you could have up to three responses for this one, too. So this one is a little more crowded because people had a lot to say about the transportation and mobility here. This question asked, what enhancements would you make to improve mobility, including transit, walkability and cycling in the city? And most prominent is bike lanes on Southfield. This, it comes up in this phrase, but you can see bike trails, all sorts of wider sidewalks. Sidewalks here was a very important comment as well. Safer crossings was something that came across as well, improved sidewalks here. So those seem to be the most popular answers was expanding the sidewalk network, increasing connectivity between sidewalks, widening sidewalks, fixing the overall quality of the pathways in the city. So a lot having to do with how people can maneuver around the city through bikes and pedestrian access. And then as well, too, we added a couple of the open-ended comments that people added because there were some really great input from folks who just wanted to add their comments here. But kind of emphasizing the same thing. So improving sidewalk, eliminating some of the flooding. So that comes up later on in the sustainability section. Folks had mentioned making sure that the flooding and the drainage systems were up to par. And then, of course, making the stuff along Southfield Road and all the amenities there more accessible via walking as opposed to just driving. All right. And then debatably, the most important question to follow up with is how much would you be willing to spend annually to improve walkability and cycling access in Lathrop Village? Just getting to the point that there's a million things that we would love to do, but how important is it to you to pay more for these types of amenities? And the good news is that 50% of participants said they would be willing to spend at least some point of a portion of additional dollars annually to make these improvements. Only three folks said they would not like to spend any money. So that's a good sign. We have folks who are most commonly willing to spend about one to 50 extra bucks a year to support these new amenities. And maybe unsurprisingly, there was nobody who wanted to spend 500 to an extra $1,000 a year. But we'll keep that in mind. And then Jill will go into the neighborhoods. So I'm going to skip this question, but there is quite a few resiliency and sustainability questions we offered up to participants as well. The first of which was, which of the following areas would you like to see the city focus on to improve sustainability? And we offered up a couple of options. And then we also left an open-ended option. The most popular options that we offered up was reducing flooding through better stormwater management. So folks really seemed to identify with this being a priority, as well as encouraging solar energy participation and improving the maintenance of the culvert and ditch system. So this is kind of ties into our transportation question as well. People want to see that the stormwater is managed well, and so is the ditch system, too. And then again, folks were able to add some of their open comments as well. And we're really kind of impressed with how people are really attuned to what's going on for sustainability concepts here. So they want to make sure that some of the comments mentioned rainwater collection systems that are robust, making sure that the ditch systems are considered an asset and really kind of taking advantage of the fact that they're all throughout the city. People had mentioned adding more green infrastructure and dense housing, even some comments about equalizing property taxes to make sure that these initiatives are not being felt by new residents as opposed to old residents. And as well, too, we asked folks to consider resiliency. So especially with the COVID pandemic, how can we think about what's going to make us most prepared for, whether it be the next health crisis or natural disaster? So we asked people, how should the city be planning for the next natural disaster or health crisis? And this was an open-ended question. We just wanted to kind of get an understanding of how people felt about it. And there were 11 responses. Some of the ones that encompassed more of the common responses are here. So the idea of setting up a response team or an emergency planning team for these types of things to make sure that resources are ready to be dispersed whenever something like this happens. To develop a disaster recovery plan, or maybe some type of plan that could be presented to residents annually. And then making sure that we have the adequate police, medical, fire staff so that things can be responded to in a timely manner. And then these two bottom ones here seem to touch on the fact that there should be some type of financial reserves or fund accessible so that the community has these resources if need be. So those are the resiliency questions. There was also three different redevelopment sites you're probably aware of that they went through. And we asked if you could reimagine these sites, what they look like. And Jill's going to get to those. I'm just gonna, I believe there's one question about Southfield Road onsite parking. Jill, did you want me to touch base on this one?
Yeah, I think that would be good.
Great. Okay, so this one was a fun one. We asked folks, what do you think about redevelopment and parking along the Southfield Road corridor? And we offered folks kind of a little sketch of what it would look like to redevelop that Southfield Road and have parking behind the storefronts. And we kind of proposed these four different ideas and to understand if folks kind of agreed with the setup with that or maybe disagreed with how that would work along the corridor. And in total, we had 15 people respond to this question here. Buildings on Southfield Road should be improved was something that almost everybody strongly agreed with, whether that be through code enforcement or facade improvements. That's something we found a lot of consensus with. Cars should be parked in lots and not on city streets. Overall, pretty high consensus on that, but obviously not at the five level mark. And then expanding parking areas should be permitted only with a development project. So folks are also open to the idea that expanded parking along Southfield Road behind the commercial buildings is something that should be considered as they start to redevelop this area. And then landscape screening and parking areas is something that also gained a lot of consensus here with an average of 4.7. So people really agree that landscape screening is something that could help create that buffer between those residential areas and then the commercial strip along Southfield Road. And then finally, if you get the chance to look at this PDF, these additional feedback comments were a really great thing to read through. Like I said, people have really awesome concise feedback for all these different prompts. And this is kind of the dumping ground for any other ideas that they had about the city. A lot of it had to do with code enforcement, some really interesting comments about the drainage system and environmental sustainability. Create strategic volunteer engagement through tree planting is a really interesting idea that some could consider here. So some of the good comments are here as well. And then finally, in the virtual open house, there is a section where folks could place a marker on a map and make a note about that particular location. And so some of those are located here. So you can see some folks dropped pins in different areas and offered feedback from there. So this one here is correlated to here about the blight on Southfield Road and hoping to make that a priority. As well, we've had some folks who have lived in the neighborhood for about 20 years. And they're saying that they're hoping to see some improvement on Southfield Road and make it more desirable because they really love the area. As well, too, a call for some greenscape around this intersection here with 696, some safer signage and crosshatching for pedestrians who might be accessing this particular portion here. And then some other comments calling on some neighboring communities as inspiration, too. So this is an interesting part to look at here because people tagged their locations. But overall, a lot of really great feedback, especially these open-ended ones that are worth reading through more in depth. But that's just kind of the basic overview of those sections. And Jill will take you through the neighborhoods and the redevelopment sites. But before that, does anyone want me to stop at a certain page? I skimmed through a little bit quickly, I want to make sure.
This is Jason. I think this is really interesting information. And we're going to need to make sure that we take time to consume it and integrate it into our thoughts and ongoing conversations we have over the coming months. It's, I was really impressed by even, you know, I'm sure, at least personally, I felt like I was hoping more people would participate and respond and comment. But even with the relatively small number of people that commented compared to the total population of the city, it's still really great insight. And I appreciated that a lot of the comments were also not necessarily critical, but just pointing out things that are challenging, not just the stuff that's good.
Yeah.
All right. Well, if there aren't any other questions. Thank you, Megan. I just emailed you this presentation just in case I get kicked off. We will not, you won't miss anything. All right, so. There we go. So we just did number one. And we're going to focus tonight, the rest of the discussion, on the idea of neighborhoods and also the redevelopment sites. So jumping right into neighborhood units. So I wanted to kind of have us think a little bit about what a neighborhood is. And it's more than usually just where people live. It often includes shops or restaurants or parks or schools and places of worship. They tend to also be places where you can get at least some of your daily needs within close proximity of where you live. So you aren't thinking necessarily just about your street, but your neighborhood might be an area that you can access within just a few minutes. They're really important because they tend to draw people together who are maybe somewhat similar within their neighborhood. They sometimes will have a defined boundary on a street or a natural feature like a river. You have a pretty good definitions of these neighborhoods, and we'll look at that in a minute. But the really important thing about the neighborhood is that they're the building blocks of the community. And they really often, and I'm seeing this more and more, especially with the advent of certain kinds of social media, we see very hyper-local commenting. But asking someone in one part of a community to offer input on another part, we sometimes have a hard time with that. But if we're asking them something specific about where they live and work or play, they tend to be right on that. I think that's also really evident when we think about development projects. If we think about a NIMBY, not in my backyard, really those folks aren't coming out during the overall planning process necessarily. They're coming out when they feel threatened in their neighborhood. So I think it's worth a real, an extra focus on thinking about what that is. Connected neighborhoods are really, I think, the way that we're going to be sharing information about the community at large. I think folks miss things at the city level sometimes, even in a small city like Lathrop. But their internet, their social networks within their neighborhoods tend to be pretty significant. In that way, we can encourage additional civic participation and events and activities, and also raise awareness of resources that might be available for people when they're needed. If somebody, for example, doesn't know how to access information on the city's website, but they find someone in their neighborhood who can help them with that, or even just other kinds of resources. It's a really good way for people to feel they have that sense of trust with their neighbors and being able to share information with each other and help out. When we have a disconnected neighborhood, and I don't mean to suggest anything by that picture, it's just one of your neighborhoods. People are less likely to feel like they're part of the overall community. They can miss out on opportunities to participate in civic life. And that can be challenging for local governments, but also schools and businesses and service organizations when we're looking for volunteers or for folks to help out in other ways. If people don't feel connected to their community, they may not want to participate. So strengthening our neighborhood connections really helps tie the community together and improves the quality of life for everybody. So I want to kind of go back. I was thinking about this, thinking about how neighborhoods have evolved over generations with the development pattern that we've had and the development pattern we've had in the region. But Lathrop Village was modeled on the idea of a garden city. And we've gone through this before when we've talked about, we had, I did that preservation or the Oakland County Heritage Conference a few years ago. And I did a whole presentation on Lathrop Village being the garden city and the only one in Michigan. This is just a couple of slides on that. For those of you who didn't see that, I can't remember if I did it recently. I mean, I feel like I did, but everything feels like time is changing. But really, the idea of the garden city was that there was a large city, and it was surrounded by freestanding towns that were connected to each other by radial rail lines. So there were avenues that were a certain size. And within those, there was park space that was accessible for everyone in the community. And then within that, those spaces, there were sites for schools and playgrounds and gardens. On the outer ring of that, the idea was that that's where you would have all the factories, all the things that might impact your neighborhood, the residential areas, and that the goods would travel down those radial spokes into the town area. So Louise Lathrop was really fascinated by that idea. And she, when she purchased 1,000 acres of land when what was then Southfield Township, her idea was to create a garden city. And she did that in thinking that, that Southfield Road would become a superhighway and that Lathrop would end up being, was the Lathrop Townsite then, that the central city would really be Detroit and that people would still be coming and going, but they would be using mass transit, which was planned at the time. Obviously, that didn't happen and things changed. But you can see the way she had these areas laid out, that she had an idea about how the neighborhoods might function. So there were also these lots along the corridors like Southfield and 12 Mile and 11 Mile. I don't know whether those were really intended specifically for commercial uses or if they were to be another type of residential use. But they never, it didn't take off. It took several years, as you can see. We have an aerial here from 1952 that shows majority of homes being built first, and they were radiating out from the center. So in the center, we had the school, any Lathrop School, we had the town hall. There really wasn't much in the way of commercial development because people didn't really think of this area as being needed, that you would need that in this area, that you would still be traveling back to the city. In 1956, you start to see a little bit of changes. By 1967, you start to see more some of that office-type development as people are moving away from the center city closer to the main intersections at 11 Mile and 12 Mile. And then by the 1990s, the city and the region are very heavily auto-dependent. And so what that did for us is it made us have to get in our car and drive everywhere for everything. The way those lots were originally laid out on Southfield, they're very shallow and they limited the kind of development that we, that we ended up seeing there. But I share all that because I want to get back to the idea of the neighborhoods. Because I think that looking at the way that the city was developed and the roads that are existing provide some really good logical boundaries. And if you look at those, there's really no more than about a half a mile radius if you start at the center of each of those neighborhoods and go out towards the mile road. So towards Southfield or towards Evergreen, towards 12 Mile or 11 Mile or Lincoln. And we asked a question on the, in the public input to find out where people were. So we had what we thought was just very little participation from south-side neighborhoods. And I wanted to throw this out to you all to ask you, why do you think that is? And is that typical? Is that something that you find in other civic events or other activities? Do you find that you are seeing more people from the north side, north of 696? Or is this just sort of an anomaly that maybe they didn't know about the survey? Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
I do.
I'm just getting up for a second to close my door. I'm still here.
Okay. I think that my, my experience tells me that this is typical. A lot of the events that the city does happen to revolve around what the civic center area, city, the town hall area. And all, you know, pretty much every business, almost all the businesses that are frequented are in the, you know, the lower northwest area in the Village Center district, right? So I think it takes effort for people south of 696 to be able to participate in things that are happening collectively in the city. And so it's my experience, you just don't, don't see them very often. And it's almost like, I mean, I feel like I'm, I've been living in Lathrop Village for 15 years now with a brief stint living outside the city. But I own, I own my property the entire time. And pretty much, almost all the relationships that I have, the friendships that I have are with people that are north of 696. But I don't know why that is. It's just something that I've noticed. So when you ask a question like, is this typical? Or, you know, does it seem like this type of response is consistent with my experience of how people are interacting with the city? That it is, it matches up. And I then, I think it's a problem. It's something that we need to, I've been thinking for a long time about how do we find ways to do a better job of integrating the neighborhood south of 696 better into the community?
Yeah, and Jason, I'd like to piggyback on that as well. I was the one that's actually on the southeast. So if you exclude me, we actually had zero participation in the southeast side. It's been a problem integrating with neighbors to go to different events, whether it's a food truck Friday or what have you. It is, in fact, when we take our It is, in fact, when we take our walks, we actually walk across the highway and walk northeast. It's just one of those things where the neighborhood almost feels like a separate neighborhood and almost a separate inner city, almost like there's two Lathrop villages.
One comment I would add to that is, and I think it's in part, my guess would be it's a part because in the expressway certainly contributes to that. It would be interesting to have had similar surveys to, to reference back to Lathrop before the expressway was in place. But I think the other aspects of it that somewhat contribute to that might be that some of the newer housing areas are in the southernmost part of Lathrop Village. And the, the housing character, I would say, becomes less, less diverse, less, I don't want to say historic, but I think in terms of the age, there's that, there's, there's a little bit less variety. And I think there are, there's certainly exceptions to that. There's some, some original homes and some older homes that are, are in both the southwest and southeast corners. But there's, I think, a certain energy in looking to, you know, looking, when, when I came into the neighborhoods, we looked at, you know, where would we want to be? Northeast side, northwest side, it was always focused north of the expressway at that time. And I think it was because there were larger areas to spread out to, to walk about. And I just thought that as being more attractive by itself. So, and I think that's, no, I don't know what that says about in terms of, I don't know if there's a level of energy or anything of, or a sense of participation. I think it's just geographically easier because of the concentration of the, the portion of the, of the city that is, that is there. And because the center geographically or, or by the street pattern tends to focus there. So I don't know if anyone has any additional thoughts on that.
Jill, Jill, I have a question. In the, in the process of you guys working on this, has anyone had any conversation with the various real estate agents that sell homes within Lathrop Village? To see how the perception of Lathrop Village is from their view as they market it? As, because they're marketing the neighborhood, so.
Right. No, we haven't at this, until this point, up till this point, we haven't.
It's just interesting because I remember when we were looking, they were very clear. If you were going to move to Lathrop Village, you wanted to be on north side of 696. I mean, it's just, so it's a question. I wonder how is it now? Since there are, obviously, homes are selling on both sides of the freeway. But what's the perception of the people who are actually marketing within the city?
Last, just curious, did they specify or indicate why you wanted to be north of the expressway? Or was it just sort of like, oh, that's just where you want to be?
No, I think it was because it was clo, it was more on, once you cross 696, it seems like there's just more of the city on that side of it.
All right. Thank you.
Mark mentioned the architectural styles being a little bit more defined, maybe is the word, north of 696. But I also think the, the lack of trees south of 696 makes a big difference in how those neighborhoods feel. And that's easy, I mean, easy-ish.
Are, are the lot sizes any different on, on the south side of 696?
I don't know that they're that much different. They might even be a smidge bigger, maybe.
Yeah, like on southeast side, we have the wetlands right behind us. And so we have actually larger lots than a lot of our neighbors north of us.
Okay. But it would be interesting to hear what, you know, some of the prominent real estate agents who market a lot of Lathrop property, how do they market the city? Or how do they market the neighborhood?
It's a good question. And I think that's something that would be useful to know, too. Now, I think this is something that we addressed in a different way. Well, I'll keep going and then I'll tell you why. So if we think about the neighborhoods and we think about what people might need within a 10-minute walk, we might think about parks and open space, convenience shopping, so just your place you could get your basic goods, and then third places. So we, some of you may be familiar with this term. It really is about the place where people kind of hang out and relax. It's not your home, which is your first place, or work, which is your second place. But it's your third place where you just relax. You go maybe with friends or you go by yourself to just look at people or just have some space that's different from home or work. And we don't know that we have a lot of that here in Lathrop Village. Parks, you're good. This is a map from the recreation plan that we're working on. And you'll see that the areas in red, the little red circles, are for the mini parks that you have. And that serves generally a five-minute walk radius. The blue parks are neighborhood parks and those are about a 10-minute walk. And then the green, all the schools are there and are hatched and those have playgrounds attached with them. And then community parks are obviously Southfield Civic Center and Catalpa Oaks. We count those as parks for you because they are within a walking distance. So you can see most people are covered by even a 10-minute park other than the corner of like 11, or Southfield Road and 11 Mile. In terms of convenience goods, this is a very crude map that just kind of shows you the gas stations in blue, the blue dots. You've got them just at your periphery. Although I should have put in like a hatch, a hatched line over the proposed one, the one that's under, that's been approved. Grocery stores, you've got the Kroger over there at 11 Mile and Evergreen. In terms of third places, there are a couple restaurants up at the north end, but then nothing else really. And then I showed a couple that are on the edges. And then the library is another place. And then not, not really any pubs or bars. I don't think we'd count the Jagged Fork as that because they're only breakfast and hoosie brunches and lunch. But if we think about the comprehensive plan and the future land use map, this is the future land use map from our last master plan five years ago. We show here a mix of uses along Southfield Road and then a civic center, Village Center area right in the middle. But we really haven't talked much about what happens on the mile roads. We identify commercial auto, more auto-oriented uses right at the intersections. But then in blue, those are just office and that's pretty much a single-purpose office district. And then the brown is multiple family. Most of that's built, existing developments. But we'll come, we can kind of come back to that. Back in 2014, 13, we did a non-motorized transportation plan for the city, a complete streets plan. And here, we really started to recognize, acknowledge this issue over the four separate quadrants of the city. And we talked about it. And when we have our conversations with the road commission and with Southfield Road, I probably say it every time we get together. This is really important to make this area more walkable because we have a city that's divided into four sections. And it seems to me that if people, especially, I've just perceived that I don't see a lot of involvement. I haven't. I've been working with you for eight years or nine years. And I don't see a lot of folks from the south, south of 696, at least that have identified themselves that way, except for the folks that came out when then we had that gas station proposed. And maybe that's part of it, too, is we haven't had a lot of redevelopment down there. But just trying to reiterate with the road commission, reinforce with them how important this is. This is a really unique community in that it's small, but even its small size, it's divided into four quadrants. And clearly, probably two at the top that are more contained and then each of the two that are below. So the good news is we do have the bike route signage and repair stations that are coming soon because of the grant that Suzie helped prepare and has been working on, and then continue to work with the road commission. But then maybe we start to think about alternatives to having people on Southfield Road. We know this is still a work in progress and it's going to take some time. So how do we look at that? So if we look at the upper northwest, is there a way that we can help people get in and around the neighborhood to access what might be available to them either now or in the future or in adjacent communities if they, if they are there by making additional improvements within the neighborhoods to make those more accessible? So just kind of focus in here. Those dots are where the roads are blocked between Lathrop and Southfield. And I think that's something that's worth exploring is to make sure that those are very pedestrian accessible. They don't necessarily, I wouldn't advocate that you open those to vehicular traffic necessarily, but allowing, encouraging more bicycle and pedestrian access. Most of them, I think, have that in some way. We did run into an issue when we were working on the bike plan, here? Oh, yeah, under my little film strip here. Just hide that for a second. Over here on Villa, when we were looking at the bike route, that the pedestrian connection, or no, it's at Roseland where the roads are closed. The pedestrian access isn't sufficient to have it be like a shared-use pass. So we had to reroute a little bit around there, but, but thinking about things like that. There's the lower northwest section. So you can see that we had been thinking about this for a while or ways to get around identifying key destinations in the city. I think this is just important to reiterate again in this current master plan. But what else might we need at the neighborhood level? I think having active or maybe reactivate some neighborhood associations that help serve as a hub of information. I think that Commissioner Fobbs, if you are in the southeast section, southeast neighborhood that, you know, maybe you know somebody, or maybe it's you, that can be an advocate or serve as a hub of information to get people more involved in your neighborhood and explain, like if they know you and you say, this is really important that, that, that our neighborhood participates because we want to feel like we're more part of the city. We want to take advantage of the things that the city has to offer and feel like we're part of the community and here's how we can do that. That's in part a, a master plan or comprehensive plan function, but it really goes into implementation and, and thinking about how do we create these neighborhood associations? Or maybe tap into ones that are existing to really try to get people more engaged. I mean, the, Commissioner Hammond mentioned the, the relatively low participation of the virtual open house. And it was more than we had at the rec, the rec plan open house. We had that in person in December. It's your, your community participates in a lot of activities and events. But when it comes to these kinds of long-range planning activities, we don't see much involvement until something is a problem and then everybody comes out. We want to fix that and make it the other way so that people understand and have buy-in and believe in their master plan so that when development comes, they say, oh, good, this is exactly what we talked about.
And Jill, I might want to add just a couple of things. One was when we look at the response, it was low. But one of the things that are probably more root cause is kind of neighborly interconnection, at least in my area I can speak to. And so I think that what we're seeing is that the survey response is really more symptomatic of neighbors having, we don't have a green space where everyone's kind of hanging out. Obviously, if I'm on the northeast side, I'm using City Hall, the garden, et cetera. It's just meeting spaces. We do not have that in our area. And so what you wind up having is basically, you may know the person next to you, but you don't know the person down the street. I was actually with Bruce when we did the road commission, you know, talking series. My house was the house and everyone kind of met at my house. And it was very unusual for my side of town to even have a meeting event as important as the roads were. And so, you know, it was kind of an aha moment as I was talking to Bruce before and afterwards. Like he said, Will, you're the only one I know over there. So can we meet and have neighbors over? And it's one of those things that I think that what we're seeing is again, symptomatic of something that's a little bit deeper in terms of community connection.
I, that's an awesome example and that's exactly what I'm talking about. I think that's how, instead of, I think we're kind of maybe transitioning from some of our, you know, mass town hall meetings or mass community open houses and needing to focus more. And not to say that we don't want people to think about the bigger picture, we do. But we know that they're more likely to respond when it's, they're going to feel the impact in a more significant way.
I, I had probably a dozen different thoughts through my head. You guys are just talking about this specific issue. And while Jill was presenting her presentation on this section. The first one is even in the results from the open house, there's a reference in one of the free-form comments about, you keep seeing the same people show up all the time. That there's a relatively small, small group of people and it's very homogeneous and it's the same folks that show up all the time for all the, all, whatever those things are. And I don't know what perspective that comment was written from, if it was written from the perspective of somebody who is one of those people who shows up for things all the time and just, they see the same people all the time? Or if it's from the perspective of somebody who doesn't participate much, but when they do, they tend to see the same people? But that comment alone kind of supports the idea that this issue is important. Looking at a map like this, I'm thinking about like boroughs, right? Or neighborhoods in a city like New York or Boston. And again, we're obviously not that big. But, you know, each of those cities have, have like aldermen or some like formal role, right? That a person in that community plays to represent the interests of that community. So I think formalize, like it says here on this slide about neighborhood associations and activating them. But anything that we can do from a city government perspective, and I guess primarily from the perspective of city council and city administration, to try and engage the people who are active in those communities to see if they can help us identify sort of a leader that could be like the liaison between that section of the city and, and then the, and the city council, the center of the city itself, right? Would be helpful. Then I had thoughts about things like, you could have competitions between the different neighborhoods, right? And put together some sort of a prize of some sort, like an investment in that neighborhood of some sort of infrastructure or something like that. Doesn't have to be very large, just a small investment, but something that's worth competing for, right? And then set up competitions between the different neighborhoods. But then also doing things like cross-neighborhood potlucks, right? And schedule a couple of times a year when the upper northwest quadrant gets together somewhere with the folks in the southeast quadrant. And it's kind of organized by the leaders of the neighborhood associations in those sections of the city. And they can coordinate themselves and decide which part of the city to meet in. But anyway, I think formalizing something like this with neighborhood associations and leaders helps to, and then having a support from the city in the form of things like prizes or, you know, things to compete for, bragging rights even, like all those sorts of things help to draw the communities closer together.
Well, Jason, maybe even years past, we used to block off Lathrop Boulevard on the northeast side and there'd be a block party. And even having block parties that actually wind up connecting the neighborhood. So it's like a traveling block party, maybe looking at it in three or four quadrants, connecting them, makes a big difference. My next-door neighbor turned 90 and the police honked their horn and people came by. And it was actually one of the first times in a while that it felt like we're part of the village. Now, my wife and I are very connected because we do teas and we invite people over and we're, we're kind of like social sanguins. But in general, I think that it was, it's one of those things that it doesn't feel as connected. And sometimes you can just kind of fake it by just doing a block party and blocking off.
And sometimes you can just kind of fake it by just doing a block party and blocking off Lethro Village for a couple of hours. And now you have, but we don't have a meeting place. And so it's one of those things that, like when we do stroll through Lethro Village, we're not ever part of a stroll, right? So, so even though we're on the same street and it just doesn't feel like there's an interconnection and almost being intentional about that.
Yeah. That's exactly my thought that if you, if you formalize these things, then you drive the intention.
It'd be cool to have like a flow roll that went all the way down.
We did that. I actually have something we called Spring Roll. That was a, I don't remember who designed the route. It might've been Rob Mantinen, but yeah. It's essentially meet in the park and everybody bikes together through some route throughout the city.
Ian brought that up yesterday in council and since he's not here and neither is Bruce. He, he's been signed up to start that up for when we kick off our, like our grand opening, I guess, of our bike route, however you want to look at it. So I think we're gonna, we're gonna do that again next year.
Be nice to do, if we're getting off topic, but I just, I get excited about stuff like this. But you could do like, people could, neighbors along the route could host like a little refreshment station. You know, in each of the neighborhoods and it could maybe be sponsored by the neighborhood, whatever. Okay. So anyway.
Yeah.
I love.
Those are the great ideas, right? I think that.
Those are great ideas.
Meet, meet later up to that way too. That'd be, that'd be great if we can, something to, to kind of build that back up. And I've been in the neighborhood almost, we're getting closer to 30 years. And a lot of energy went out of things, I think in 2008. And it's, of course, dynamics have changed. People have come and gone from the neighborhood. Where people are at in their lives. I mean, there were a lot of people who were, I would say, my sense is that there was a larger group of, of people with energy. There were still people you saw all the time and were, you know, involved in various different capacities. And you saw them again and again, but I got the sense that there were maybe a little bit more of that. And there was more outreach and more social activity. And I think 2008, people kind of headed back inward and had to get control over their own lives. And, and it was just a change in dynamic that took place here. A lot of the activities, the, the garden club, some of the other activities just kind of fell to the wayside in terms of populate, popularity, ran out of energy. I think people who were involved and active, rightly so, got tired to some degree of being in charge. And we're trying to get others into those roles and it just never really fully came, came together. I think there's, I think a lot of people who are probably willing to help. But there's that driving energy to pull it together to make it happen and that kind of ebbs and flows. And it certainly has in the community here.
And your community is aging too. So you have where 10 or 15 years ago, 20 years ago, you probably had a lot more families. You know, a lot of times our social networks are based on our, our kids and what they go to school with. And as the kids move on, we don't always necessarily keep that up or people move away or whatever. But having those older members of the community, the neighborhood idea is critical for them. Especially when you get into older ages where folks are limited in their mobility. Whether they can't drive or they, maybe they choose not to drive at certain times of the day. To be able to identify those folks and make sure that they have what they need and make them feel like they're still part of the community. Because when you don't have that freedom of mobility, you also can get really depressed. And that's important to keep in mind for some of those folks.
Right.
And they're the ones who are doing all, spearheading all of those activities.
No, no, in actuality, I think from the time that we moved in and raised our, raised our kids here. We are, we sense that currently there are more families and there's more young and there's more diversity amongst the, the families that are being raised, raised here as well. And so we think that's a positive sign.
Good.
Yep. Mark, I would probably say like, I can speak for myself, just anecdotally, is, you know, before when our kids were young, we actually wound up doing things like the dance studio at City Hall. It wound up being that third party. City Hall wound up being that third party because it was just, all the young girls would actually meet and then the moms would actually talk and then the dads talk. And so we lost a lot of those little nuances over the years that wound up connecting just families. And so I, I think that anything that can be done or planned on to kind of stimulate that is important. Because it actually winds up being almost like a hub on, on the wheel. It just kind of connects everything.
Yeah. And the pandemic is making, going to make this specific point more challenging. Until we actually have some situation, whatever it looks like, a vaccine or anything else like that, that makes it possible for larger groups of people to be able to gather, even when you have smaller groups of people gathering, when you're having social distance and people have to wear masks and all the safety precautions you have to take. It's difficult to build momentum behind a third place like that.
Any other comments? What about Anna? Anna, you haven't said anything.
No, I don't feel like I have anything to add. I agree with a lot of what's been said.
I have one last thing to add. It will be really interesting to see the results of the census count relative to things like the aging of the community and the economic situation of the community compared to 10 years ago.
Yeah, I'd like to see that too, because when I, when we moved in, we sensed it was quote, an aging community. And we waited to see if there would be more families. And there were some folks we knew who were in the neighborhood. And they decided that it was time to move and they needed to be, wanted to be elsewhere. So they moved on to Farmington Hills. They moved to other places. A family behind us wanted lakefront, so they jumped at an opportunity and went and did that, even though they were commuting back to, I think Shrine, Shrine for their kids in school. From like Oxford and up in that region. So, but, but yeah, that was prior to 2008. And so it changed the dynamics there as well. So, yeah, there's been challenges, but you know, I think it's a cycle. And there's things we can do about it too, I think encourage or to jumpstart. But it starts with the enthusiasm of residents and commitment to a community and the willingness to stay and, and build and build that.
And part of that is having those folks feel like they're part of the community. All right. Well, that was awesome discussion. Thank you. So for the rest of our time, just talking a little bit about the three redevelopment sites that we have identified. The first one is the House in the Woods. The current future land use plan identifies that area as cluster housing. Resident feedback from the open house suggested the walking trail, the gardens, people noted maybe a dog park. So it was sort of torn between parks or someone actually did say maybe three or four houses could be built there. So what?
Actually, council, council is actively marketing that for sale for redevelopment.
For housing?
For housing.
Okay.
Or I guess whatever the person that buys it wants to do with it. But they are putting together an R, they've directed administration, put together an RFP to send that out for, to be listed.
So this would be a very good time for us to be talking about this site. So that whoever responds to the RFP with a proposal is going to submit something that's really in line with what the community wants to see here. Obviously, a private developer is not going to come in and put in a walking trailer garden necessarily. But what kind of housing? Or is it important for there to be some other kind of community space maintained here?
And I guess the challenge I would see, and I think we've received some feedback. The properties that bound, that are bounding that property right now are interested in their privacy. They're interested in the, I guess, the separation that they currently have by having that as green space. Right now, it's not very attractive, but I think my wife and I walked through there this past spring for the first time in, well, probably for me, it was since the house was there. And it's, 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 I want to say rugged. It's rugged in terms of a natural, in a natural type setting. From that, from that standpoint, we also saw two deer carcasses in there and, and speculated where is it? This is a place where the deer come to, come to, to die? Or is it, did somebody actually throw a carcass out there from, you know, from hunting or something? Maybe elsewhere. Who knows?
It's the coyotes.
Coyotes would certainly be, well, are the coyotes taking down a deer? I mean, I suppose they could if they were within a pack and I don't doubt that they exist because we've had them up and down our street within the last month and month and a half. Certainly, but, but, but the area is probably not attractive or walkable to the majority of residents unless you're used to traipsing through areas that are, where the paths aren't necessarily going to keep your feet dry, especially in the wet weather.
I personally liked, when I was reading this, you know, park with a barbecue pit gazebo and essentially like trying to create a smaller or mirrored version of the community spaces at City Hall over in this property. I like that idea personally, but I can imagine, A, the people that live there probably wouldn't appreciate it for the reasons that you said. They appreciate their privacy and they want to protect that. But also, where are you going to park? Like, I mean, you know, if you have a concert in the park at City Hall, there's lots of places for people to park and drive from other parts of the city where it's far, you know, a really long walk and still be able to participate. If you drive over to this part of the city, you're just going to be parking along, you know, the morning side and Rainbow Circle. You know, it's, there is, there is no real parking area to support events like that.
And, and, and I think to some degree, there's opportunities lost. I think everyone had, I mean, you couldn't see the House in the Woods very well when it was there without getting into it because it was very overgrown and grown in. And there was the history of it having been of, an early focus of the city. I mean, at least in terms of the post office was there and some other functions were there, particularly after the, or in through the depression way back. But I think there were ideas bantered around at that time of, could you make that a social gathering place even when the house was there? But that was before all the other houses were built and other, other, you know, practical issues were dealt with with regard to the homeowner at that time retaining the property and needing the funds to take care of, I think, back taxes. And I think the challenge now is, I think there's been the desire for green space there and a more maybe formal park that's a bit, maybe a bit more manicured than what it is, to the very least. But the funding to accomplish that is not been available from the city. And it has not been independently, was able to be gathered up to, to, to give it momentum. I know, I think it was Sandra Johnson had worked on that, you know, personally to try to raise the spirit, energy, volunteers to, to accomplish something. And because nothing was happening, the city felt that they needed to do something. And that was how it ended up back to looking at it from the standpoint of, of, you know, what can we do with this property to improve the appearance for the, you know, in the, in the adjacent, immediate adjacent neighborhood. I still have a hard time imagining what happens with, I can easily see looking at the plan, looking at the other lots that were divided, that you could divide it and put two more houses in, but what do you do with the circle? That in the center, could you, could you even do that and maintain a pathway through so that you could have a park in the center? It would seem, and to me, it would seem and feel fairly exclusive to those adjacent property owners. And it would feel maybe, maybe it starts to lose in size. You know, the sense of a, of a place where people would go. I don't know. Mark, on this property.
The idea of having it as green space would be great and maybe on the, on the more rugged side, but at least, you know, more accessible than it is now.
Yeah, Farmington Hill. I could, I'll speak, I know Bruce isn't here, but council, I think, is, is pretty moved on from the idea of utilizing it as green space. I think their, the overall consensus from council was to redevelop it as residential properties. However, it may get divided up and to put it back on the tax rolls and try to recoup some of the city's expenditures over the years and maintaining that. So I would encourage if there's other thoughts for it to reach out to the council and let them know. But that's, that's kind of where they're at right now as of, as of last night, they were talking about it again. So.
Right.
And I think that's consistent. I mean, that's been several years that I think the city tried to let it be open space and green space. They try letting a volunteer community develop that into the preserve. That didn't really work out. And as Mark pointed out, there is the, the issue of ongoing maintenance. And when you have another park in the area, and is that really necessary in that section of the community? If we think about it as being developed with something that's not, you know, not a community amenity. But home seems like the most likely in this area. Would you expect to see that just be like everything else there? Or is there a different kind of housing type that might be appropriate? Maybe something smaller, maybe something attached? Any other thoughts on that? Or would you just want to see pretty much a repeat of what else? Like finishing up the circle with the same kinds of houses?
My perspective on it would be that I think whatever is constructed there should be, feel like it's fitting to the neighborhood and not, and I, and given that such a great percentage of that circle is built the way it is or that was developed with houses to the extent that it was, it's hard for me to imagine what a different housing style would necessarily look like and how well it would fit to the neighborhood there. And I, and I have trouble imagining it. It's not to say that it's not something that's possible. But I think it would have to be a sensitive design to feel like it was part of the neighborhood and kind of fit in.
Anna's mom always wanted Thompson Towers, high rise with the restaurant, revolving restaurant on the roof. So.
I remember her saying that.
That's, that's an option we could throw out there.
Right in the center.
I think that's spectacular. Any other ideas on other housing types?
I think part of my trouble is trying to orient something within a circle and how it fits and sits and.
It's a great point. Like if you're, if the, if the city council is going to sell that property to a private developer and that private developer's plan is to develop houses, then there's, there's just no way that that circle is going to be utilized like by the mass of the community outside of that circle. It just doesn't really, I don't think it's, I don't think people would feel welcome. It just doesn't really, I don't think it's, I don't think people would feel welcome to it, to be perfectly honest. And so if you try to make it a public space and it either, A, becomes exclusive, like Mark said, and only the houses that are directly around it are going to use it, or it becomes neglected because people don't feel comfortable going through people's, you know, properties to get to it. So, yeah, that's going to be interesting.
All right.
I've heard it.
Okay, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I've heard it expressed before, the, the concept of complete, complete the pie and, and, and take the circle away and, and the homeowners have the option to buy in for their wedge. And I thought, this seems like a nightmare property shape to, to manage what happens in the center. Yeah, I, it's an interesting, it's an interesting, just from the standpoint of how it's, how it's divided. I can easily see it being split with the two remaining sections. I can, I can imagine it being somebody, if they wanted to buy the whole parcel and put their house right in the center and not care that they had houses surrounding, and maybe they're far enough away. And I, I kind of get the sense that they actually would be, but you do have a lot of bounding neighbors on, on, on one place. But somebody would have to have a grand scheme and some money to, to put something appropriate, to put it at the center of that. I mean, just from an architectural perspective.
All right, well, we can move on to the next, the next site is Southfield Road. This is south of 696. This is between Margate and Rainbow. It's a vacant lot, kind of a blank slate. It's designated as mixed use on the future land use plan and also zoned that way. It could be a couple of stories and people kind of responded to that mix of uses. So folks talked about restaurants, produce market, residential, even office. And then a couple of people noting some sort of a city sports facility or community activity center or rentable meeting space.
Jill, what do you know, can you share anything on the history of this lot and it being vacant for so long? Has it been a limitation of what, of what is going to be allowed to sit there? What was in the, in the past allowed to, to be constructed there?
I, I think Suzie is going to share that history.
As far as I know, that is supposed to be overflow parking for Primarica. I've never once seen it utilized and I don't think it has been in several years. But, so my understanding is that that is strictly for their office, but yet they have no intentions of doing anything like that, so.
Okay, so it is owned by the adjacent.
Correct.
Yeah.
I wish I had more information to share about it, but I do not.
I remember, yeah, I would say it feels like it's been an open parking lot for a long time. Yeah.
So it's currently an open parking lot, but if you had a business or a sports facility or something like that, then you, where are you going to park? And, and what we always, again, don't know what's going to happen with Southfield Road corridor and Oakland County's decisions around that. It's really difficult to come up with any sort of a reliable strategic direction for planned use for this property, given those two things.
Right.
I think these ideas are great that people threw out there, just trying to be, you know, just, just, you know, come up with good ideas, whatever, throw stuff against the wall and see what sticks. But, yeah, it's, I think because of the fact that it's adjacent to Southfield Road, then it obviously is encumbered with all of the challenges that any other section of Southfield Road has relative to the Oakland County decision.
And the restrictions of the, the narrowness of the depth of the lot to accommodate it. So if you had, for instance, parking adjacent to it or the opportunity for parking adjacent to it, that would allow potentially more buildable area and maybe something suited for what those businesses are to support them.
The last one is our favorite site, the school site. It's designated as Village Center. It's right in the middle of the Village Center. Oh, I forgot to put it in the map. All right, well, you all know where it is and what it looks like.
That's not the right map.
It's like, wait, that's not the right.
Antillatri school.
I'm sorry, we've, we've actually.
But the insight is correct, right? The.
The insight is correct. Sorry about that.
My peoples.
I want anyone to get the wrong idea. We're not suggesting anything by that. But people may really commenting from a perspective of wanting to keep that building and see it rehabbed into condo housing, refurbished, have small stores or office space, or utilizing it in some way for other things like senior living or other kinds of, an expansion of the civic center.
It seems like the one out of the three properties that, well, I mean, this is, maybe the only property along the Southfield Road corridor that has enough free area around it that you could actually accommodate parking and still develop inside of that building, inside of that space, the existing building. So, yeah, all of these ideas I think are, are great. Then it just comes down to, I think any one of them could work.
Right.
And the question comes down to, well, you know, which business has the, the business model and the incentive to actually pull it off?
Or the benevolent benefactor. But to jumpstart something that, that might go against the perceived development viability, viability and profitability.
Right, well, and, you know.
Greater risk, greater chance taking.
Sam Surin has come before, I think both city council and I know for sure, our commission, you know, and it kind of very high level, very amorphous comments, but, you know, about the potential use of that property since this company owns it, right? And they, they bought the, the old church and the bypass in Birmingham, right? And turned it into a modern building that still retained part of the old structure that had been there before. That was the church building. And he kind of alluded to this property could be something like that where they, you know, keep, raise some, some of it, keep some of it integrated with a new building that does something. But none of that's going to happen unless there's a viable business, you know, model of a business of some sort, whether it's any of these ideas or something else that would actually operate in that space. So it's kind of the chicken egg thing. You need a business that wants to operate there and is willing to wait for the construction to occur and all that kind of stuff. And then, but then those two things kind of need to happen hand in hand.
Any other comments or thoughts, questions?
I mean, I have a lot of comments about the space, but really when I look at the three spaces as a whole, one, the city, you know, and correct me if I'm wrong, actually owns. The other two are owned from, by Primarica and by Surinow. So you, you, you're already dealing with a barrier that exists with the other two redevelopment sites. Because the, and any later school, I've actually walked through it several times. And there's a, I mean, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. And so when people, cost in the buyout cost for the building, it, it really does create an impediment.
Yeah, I believe that's, yeah, associated with it, with the, the, could be down to the paint, lead paint and, and other materials in there that are of, of, you know, potential hazardous nature. And I can't speak to the specifics of it, but by its age, I'm sure there's concerns associated with that. So, and then all it's up to cost, to, to dollars. So it's a tough position to be in. I was part of the, and, and, and of the historic district commission. And there's certainly a lot of love for the history and the sense of the history as well as the appearance of the building itself, especially the origi, well, essentially the original part of the building. And I think that perception would be a loss of that character for anything that would replace it just takes, you know, another piece of the history away. So it's a situation that just financially isn't, hasn't, you know, demonstrated itself as, as something being viable enough to make something happen.
Yeah, years ago, I think, Mark, this may be where I first met you. We walked through with Ian years and years ago, the building. And as I looked at the second floor, it needed elevators because it wasn't accessible. There are a lot of different things that, you know, as, as you're looking through it and we brought in some people that might be interested in leasing the space, et cetera. There's a lot of work that needs to be done to make this a viable redevelopment without incentives.
Right.
I think it's a really good point that out of these three options, it's the former House in the Woods location that is the easiest one to do something with because the city already has the property, right?
No, I, I haven't studied it very closely, but, I mean, from years of driving past and through Ferndale with the old St. James Catholic School that I believe has been converted into, I think it's loft type spaces. I, I, I don't recall hearing much about it since it's been done. And of course, that, that situation or that arrangement is probably, you know, that, that building itself, as I recall, is a couple of stories, a couple story facade of classrooms, which might relate more to the addition than it does to at least the front portion of the, of the original school. But it would seem like there's some potential there to create similar type like loft spaces. But there's a lot of, there's a lot of other stuff to go with it. And can it, you know, does the gym space or the, the, it's really a gym and the, the stage, et cetera? The space that has that, the potential for a grander character, you know, what do you do with that in that scenario? Yeah, the, a few of us, I think the last time when we had, then Suzie was there with the students. We got to peek into the attic space and the, the interesting structure that you see above the ceiling. And it was really cool and you, I could imagine dynamic things that you could do with it, but it still comes down to, what do you do with the space? What do you do with it? Where, what, how do you build enough drive for something to, you know? You can, I can picture, I can picture, you know, a microbrewery with the tanks viewing, you know, visible in the windows and it being, you know, you know, nicely illuminated on the inside and glowing. But there are portions of that space that are, it's like the low ceiling classrooms that just don't. Yeah, what do you do with it? What do you do with it? It would be nice to see it as a little bit of a performance center. My kids have taken, had gone through piano lessons for years and, and one of their, their teachers, they have their recitals at a, at a school, to a school, at a church actually, that they lease out for just, you know, an afternoon. And the, the concept of, could you ever come up with a financial package that worked to create a leasable venue for something like that where you've got a small auditorium? Something that, yeah, and it's just, I, I haven't seen any examples of that, but I think all the time about opportunities. If you can build a space, I, I've never been a fan of the large conference centers that are all partitioned off by these tall partitions that, that you can subdivide it into all sorts of practical meeting rooms or larger spaces, but they lack atmosphere and the character of the volume of an older space or, you know, space that has some uniqueness to it. So I envision all the time, you know, how do you, how do you, you know, how do you make something like that viable for somebody to take over and, and, and run it? I think we have a lot of infrastructure, a lot of, a lot of condition issues around, around the facility itself that, you know, how do you carve off a piece of it and, and, and not have to deal with the rest to make it, to make it work?
Where is everybody?
Is anyone there?
Still here, I'm mute.
Okay, I know, I, I had, I had poor internet service for a brief stint and I, everyone froze. I didn't know. It could be just fatigue on the topic and then the evening and the day, so.
Well, that was awesome, good, good conversation about those. We'll come back with some concepts or some precedent images that maybe respond to what we heard from the community and the comments that we heard from you tonight. So speaking of which, our next step will be working on the draft, the working draft plan. Hoping to have planning commission and DDA discussion on that in August and refine that as needed. After that, I just put in some tentative dates. The council will approve the distribution of the plan when we're ready, when it becomes more of a final draft for the required review period. But then hoping to have a public hearing and adoption by December. So we want to keep this rolling along. So, and does anybody have any other questions or comments, anything else you want to share?
Hearing any.
Okay.
This is really great work, thank you.
Good, you're welcome.
Okay. So I guess we are at the point, we'll move on to other matters for discussion. I've got one question for Suzie, but maybe it's more appropriate for general communications correspondence.
Whatever is your fancy.
Any word on the status of what might be happening with Panera?
No, no, I know, well, here, I'll go back to Jill because I know she had a conversation with them. I, I have not heard anything there. My, my focus with them has been the Happy's Pizza Plaza. But Jill, do you have any, have any fresh insight? Because I know you talked to them more recently.
They had just asked about a different type of user. So I think they were just looking to see if they could have maybe something else in their back pocket. It was nothing that was very firm, but they just wanted to know about a different kind of use and what the timeline would be. The medical, medical use.
Any, any sense of how they've been faring since shutdown? And, and of course, operating, trying to operate the business by doing deliveries and doing, I guess, drive, drive up, pickup without having a formal drive-through?
They've been doing, so for the quarter cleanup, I, I fed my daughter Panera afterwards and they're just doing curbside, you know, you call, you tell them what, you know, same, same kind of methodology that most, most of our businesses or most business restaurants are doing, right? You call, you tell them, you know, like making your car, like, what are you driving? I got to say, I'm driving a Gator. You know, so, and they just, you know, they walk it out and, you know, they're not, they're not faring poorly because of a lack of drive-through, how's that?
That's good. That's what I kind of wanted to hear, get a sense that, that, that at least the situation and the situation of not having a pre-established drive-through isn't diminished the, you know, I guess, business results for them. I'm looking for a positive that gives me a sense that they're not thinking of needing to be elsewhere.
I, I haven't gotten that impression from them, but, but I also have not had a whole lot of conversation with Surinows over the last little bit, so. over the last little bit, so.
Okay.
Beyond, you know, our discussion for Happy's Pizza. So.
Okay, Noah, we'll move on to legal update.
So, last night at the council meeting was the first reading of the ordinance amendment to permit above ground pools, what we did was council directed me to remove the confusing language from the general ordinance about the apron being at ground level, so that's gone. The only thing that's in the general ordinance will be that pools must, must comply with all requirements of the zoning ordinance, so. Next month, I anticipate that that'll get approved and then people can put their pools in in August. That's all for me.
Okay. Planning update?
Jill, you want to give a planning update, are we good?
I think we're good.
I think we're good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, I'll give you, I'll give you some updates, so. One quarter keep, quarter cleanup was awesome, we smashed our attendance records, we had thirty people come out and clean up the, clean up the whole quarter in about an hour and a half, so. So that was really good, that was jump, at least double what we had from last year. So we're, I'm actually trying to wrestle the the Southfield Road adoption away from the Lions Club, so that we can take that responsibility on as the DDA and have at least a couple more cleanups throughout the, throughout the year. So, so there's that, also, I have been working really hard with the DDA to distribute reopen kits, so I I, I was doing reopen kits for Lethrop and Beverly Hills. We distributed in total a hundred fifty-six reopen kits, so, and eighty of those are to Lethrop Village businesses, which is more than half of our businesses, so that makes me happy. There will be more. I believe I told you about our patronicity campaign, we killed that one too, we reached our, we met our $6,000 goal, got the $4,000 match from the county, so those funds will be used for mini-grants for our DDA businesses, still working on refining those, but stay tuned. And then, very exciting, you will start seeing some color along the corridor, I got my seven ginormous planters for in front of City Hall, and we have twenty-five hanging flower baskets that will be installed. I'm giving myself a month, because I'm not going to be that specific, right? But, so hanging flower baskets are going to be going up and down the corridor as well, so. Little bit of color coming our way. And that's all I got.
Great.
Oh, no, no, not, not all I have, just so you all know, I will be in the office on Monday, Tuesday, Thursdays for the summer and working from home on Wednesdays and Fridays, so. I keep trying to send out an email and I keep forgetting, so there you have it. Now I'm done.
Okay. So I guess that we've reached the point, we can entertain a mo, a motion for adjournment, if there is nothing else that anyone would like to discuss?
Mr. Chairman, it's Cheryl.
Yes?
I just want to mention to everyone that City Hall has reopened. And we are having residents coming in to handle whatever their business needs are, they do need to wear a mask and practice social distancing. We still encourage our residents to utilize the other means of making payments and submitting forms, including the locked drop box outside of the police department. There is a locked box inside for especially the absentee ballot applications in our online systems. That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
We have a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Ready to go. Hi.
Have a good night, everybody.
Hi, yep.
Night, everybody.
Good night.
Everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.